Continuance. A public hearing twenty, case twenty twenty-five A. Our planning board members, Madison Pixley Chair Christina Brodor, Pat Coyne, David Demers, John Matthews and. Our statement of authority, the planning board is established under chapter forty-nine of the general laws Massachusetts and acting compliances, chapter forty-eight. Under the zoning bylaws of the town of Hamden, chapter forty-one governing the submission and approval of plots of proposed subdivisions and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Hamden, Massachusetts. The legal notice, the Hamden Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. In the townhouse, six twenty-five Main Street, Hamden, Mass. On the application of Hamden Veterinary Clinic Realty LLC, twenty-eight Summers Road. For a special permit and site plan approval under section six table abuse regulation four point two six for the expansion of the existing parking lot located at twenty-eight Summers Road. And then the business district, the properties are currently owned by. Realty LLC, Dr. Penny Peck, twenty-eight Summers Road, partial twelve zero three eight zero 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 and sixteen Summers Road LLC, sixteen Summers Road, partial twelve zero three nine zero zero zero. Information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and it's available for review by the publishing normal business hours. For the board, Madison Pixley, Chair of the Hamden Planning Board, publication of. Publication in Wolverham Hamden Times, February sixth and thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. So this is being recorded. And I apologize for any opera singing in the background.
Yes.
Rebecca, our Leveque Associates, located at forty School Street in West Mass. Currently on behalf of the projects. At twenty-eight Summers Street. So last meeting, we were continued to. Out here. Back chat comment. Corporation. And initially to make some plan changes to. Parking. Towards the west. To align with the front of buildings. And there was some back and forth with what was. The front of the building. So we ended up shifting it even further to the west to align with the main. Front. West front of the building. We also changed the pavement markings to. Sit aside and enter only and exit only. Try the board's request from the last meeting. So that's really all I got. There's a letter here from Ty and Bond dated March tenth, twenty twenty-five. That basically states that we've resolved their comments and they had no.
Okay.
They were satisfied.
Yep.
I see you incorporated.
Yes, quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, if it looks like everything was resolved, I need to go line by line.
No, I don't think we need to go line by line. Everything was.
Great.
Resolved, basically, the email. And that's reflected in that, if you will, March tenth email from Ty and Bond.
Right.
Where we, the town had said, you don't have to worry about that requirement. And that's noted in there also. So, yeah. Motion to approve. Are you ready?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion to approve. The. Project as submitted. I'm gonna say on the, yeah, let's see. I got.
Revised three five, I think.
Yeah.
Or three twelve today.
Yes, okay. Yep. For. From our Leveque Associates for twenty-eight Summers Road in Hamden. For the veterinary clinic, if you will, and according to plan. Rev March twelfth. The state twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks for making the last of the changes.
Thank you, yeah.
So I'll have to type up the decision. I'll file it with the town clerk. The twenty day appeal period starts the day after I file it. Twenty first day, you can pick up the original certificate certified by the town clerk. I'll send a letter to that effect. So you'll have the date. Well, we're gonna do that next on our regular agenda.
Right, so you might as well wait.
If you, I'll just sign it right now.
Got it.
Uh, after. Hang on a minute.
So.
We have to.
Motion to close.
Yes.
The public hearing. Second.
My favor.
Hi.
All right, now we'll open our regular board meeting. March twelfth, twenty twenty-five at six forty.
Got it. I'm the same.
Our first order of business is to approve the A and R for Summers Road. You feel like we need to listen to these or?
I looked through them, yes.
Yes.
Yesterday, Joanne, or Monday?
Thank you.
Monday. And Sandy.
Is there too many alerts here? Oh, we only need one mylar. Do you want the other one back? I, I wish.
I'll just.
Here, I got one.
Yep, that's good for you. Perfect. Yep. This is gonna be. You're doing the final section of this, so. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Put the part.
You bought it.
Got it. And.
All right, that's what you want.
Good, I'm saying, okay.
Actually, the mylar should go to you.
Yeah.
Right? Ray first, the owner of the property. So you'll register it.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll give the signed one to you.
Okay.
And she would keep that extra copy or did you? I don't know. Work, so. Okay, so.
Yes. So basically what we're doing is. You're getting a piece of property from, if you will. Stevie Ann Wood, Ray Pellegrino. And you're going to add that to your existing piece. Fired frontage. So it's. Becomes a. Conforming lot.
This plus this becomes the conforming.
Yes, basically, because we've got more than enough frontage now. Okay. Close to ninety-eight, whatever this was, but it's close to.
Right, right.
Two hundred feet. We, Joanne and I just measured off in the.
Yep.
Close to two hundred, right, Joanne? Close to two hundred feet, close enough.
We look.
We measured.
Yes, but that's not it, yeah.
Yeah.
And we measured it with the ruler.
We.
Was a little off, but.
We, it was close enough. We old school with a ruler, yes.
Just looking it up itself would be.
It would be.
It would be, okay.
But it's, it would be still. Yeah. But they have to buy the piece of property.
Right, right.
That's what they're doing. Yeah. So usually we go first. We put this first.
Yeah.
I think we.
Good.
Any questions? Motion to approve. There's really no approval, but the A and R. Personally. Dated. February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. From Leveque Associates for the addition of a piece of. Property to twenty-eight Summers Road.
It is.
Yep.
Great.
Second that.
All favor.
I'll just sign them all once.
Thank you. You want this one? It's. You need all of them? No, you just get the mylar.
When you propose. Start.
I have to get bids, but hopefully over the summer.
Okay.
You know, as soon as we can get, get three bids and.
Sure. I need building department. Rightway into, in and out of, if you will, the parking, new parking areas.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll need a curb cut and that.
Right.
That'll. I wait.
All right, I want to do. Okay.
There should not be an issue.
Okay.
Right, you should be gonna go to.
Who prepared these? You did. There was only. Two paper copies.
Maybe that's why we've got a third mylar.
Yeah, you can be two mylars and two papers. Anyway, you can.
I have no idea what.
Can I get one more paper copy to be endorsed? We just usually accept three and I saw. Just now there was, there was two mylars since. So if you get me one more copy, one more paper copy.
You can get that delivered tomorrow.
That's great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. But whoever does the work should know about.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
No school today. And then we.
The building certificate?
No, no.
Amazing. Right.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you can put it in her box right outside the town.
Yeah. All right. Sixteen Fisher Lane. Right down. Most of our home works have to wait like an hour. So you guys, this is good.
You guys are good. Over too late.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us.
Truly. So what are we, what are we doing?
We're looking to do an eBay site. From our home address.
Okay.
It won't affect the butters at all. Todd has his own. Personal business. In Granby where we will be receiving our. Last goods, we sell. That kind of thing. So that will not with tax return letters, the product that we purchase will come to his personal business. And then I'll be the lucky one to bring you to the post office or.
A lot of it's offsite now anyways. It's.
Yeah.
Shops all, you know, through Massachusetts. You know, quick stuff there. They sell it. They do everything, so it's not really.
The only thing that happens is I get boxes in my house, correct, Joanne?
I saw the pictures.
All right.
And my work most eight to five, so pack, pack, packages come there and it's bringing them home.
Right. Okay. So no change in vehicles, no?
No, no.
Just you two?
No.
You won't even know.
Yeah, no employees.
Like I said, mostly right now, everything right now is just. I'd leave it at, you know, Brink's Hold or Sturridge or, you know.
We're just gonna do a little bit on eBay and see how that goes.
Okay.
I just needed a, you know, like a business certificate to open up checking account and stuff.
Got you.
You won't need a sign. You won't need a sign.
Oh, no, no, it's no, there's no. Nobody coming to the house like that.
Um. You guys aren't gonna have.
In the backyard.
You guys aren't gonna have delivery trucks come pick up stuff from your house. They'll go drop everything off.
Yeah. I mean, after they're just gonna be reg- regular.
Yeah, regular.
Everybody else.
Yeah, I just found, I.
At my house every day.
Yeah, so.
I think they're concerned when they don't come to.
Yeah, I mean, she had people who worked in Timu in my Amazon.
Amazon, yeah, like everybody else.
Yeah.
Traffic on our street all day. All right. Stay forward to me.
Will we approve the home? Application for home occupation applicant Todd Huske?
Huske.
At sixteen Fisher Lane?
Second that.
On favor.
Hi.
Great.
You can go see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Town clerk.
Yep.
I think.
Thanks very much.
Yes, good luck.
You guys can go sit in chairs if you want.
Yeah, watch the rest.
You wanna go sit in a chair? Only on the cross ground.
You guys are sitting in chair.
What's next to Don? Chat him up.
Hi, Don. You wanna come join us?
Oh, you don't need to sit down, they're easy. All right, um, what's next, A D U?
The only thing was A D U and I didn't know if you just wanted to give a status of it or. We really don't.
Is our status.
Do you wanna reply? Do you wanna reply to some of? I mean, we didn't incorporate Rose's comments.
No, Rose was gonna talk to the Attorney General about her email. They offered to review her comments.
Okay.
She didn't want us to review and put them in the thing and then revise it and then talk to the Attorney General. She said she'd take that email, speak directly with the Attorney General's office, incorporate the changes. And it would be pretty much approved by the Attorney General. We could look at it, you know, she'll send it to us.
Okay. All right.
And I mean, that would speed it up. For April sixteenth, public hearing.
Yeah.
And it has to go to Brian by April first. So I would have a good enough draft to give him. Both the B E S S and this.
Okay.
You can always change it on the floor.
I mean, we're kind of limited on how much we can really change that, right? It's like a state.
I mean, if the Attorney General's reviewing it.
Exactly, so. Kind of is what it is.
I think. I just, yeah, I had. Whatever, okay. Let's see what the Attorney General says, but. Where they say A D Us are limited to two stories. I mean, if you wanna put it in. Our bylaw basically lists it. As thirty-six, thirty-five feet, every, a lot of places. So I'm, I'm, it'll be interesting to see what the Attorney General says. Okay. She did bring out some points about corner lot. Type of thing. And she did have. The thing about the site plan approval in paragraph B was planning board may request reasonable plan. And her comment was plan modifications are a dangerous area. Rule is you can't be more restrictive, which we wouldn't be, I don't. Well, you, you have.
I heard the comment that if you don't require site plan review for a single family home, how can you? You can't require a site plan review for an A D U.
So this will be interesting to see what, honestly, what the Attorney General says, because I think other towns have approved site plan reviews. Correct. And it's passed through the Attorney General already. Yeah. It might, you don't know.
About what?
About site plan review. What did Wolverham do? Did they change?
Don't know.
Because what I read in the paper was that. They were requesting.
Site plan?
Review. So. I'm just concerned is what the Attorney General is gonna say. But that's okay.
I just had an observation reading in the. In the paper about the Wolverham. Right? Uh, so they made a statement, they said, they said, we thought we had to allow more than one A D U by special permit.
Right.
But the state clarified this. The state has clarified their regulations that that's a local option. So it's been amended so that no more than one A D U may be placed on a lot. Wolverham.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I don't know if that's, if we're in the same place with only one, like. Or a lot.
We're not.
We're not.
We're not. Right now, we, we can allow more than one. By, by special permit, so. And that was guidance from original. Our original. What was originally proposed by the state.
Yeah.
So I mean, you can see, so there's been some. Conflict and to get this ready for town meeting. State's not giving us a lot of time to do it, but that's okay.
Once town meeting.
Say that again.
Once the town meeting, May second weekend, is it second Monday in May?
So Advisory Committee is having their public hearing, I believe. The thirty-first of March. So we should have something ready before that.
Thirty-first of March?
Yeah, of this month. Yes.
Well, April first, Brian needs it, so we'd have to have, we should have it.
Yeah.
That's why I'm.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that Rose said, I told her I was backing into sending these to the public publisher. Because the legal, that's another thing I wanted to ask you guys. The backing into four sixteen, which would be a special planning board meeting, even though. By three twenty, the legal notice has to go to the Hamden Wolverham Times. They want it the Thursday before now, so three twenty.
Yeah.
I mean. Yeah, three twenty. That's next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I gotta have the legal notices. The legal notice ready. We're not gonna put the wording of the warrant articles, right?
Yeah.
Well. Is Don still here? Don, if you don't mind me asking? Um. Yeah, come on, if you don't mind. Because this involves some timing. And that's the question I have. Is.
This is the accessory.
Get A D U and probably B E S S to both of them, but in particular, right now. The timing for getting these to. The printer. Is the question that I'm gonna ask you, because weren't we gonna try and get the green sheets? And I'm saying the green sheets, you know. Were we gonna get the, the. The town budgets? Out?
By April. Well, your, the, the bylaw is the fourteenth, right?
And.
The hearing.
They, yeah, okay, so there's.
So they gotta have seven days. So we're looking at April first.
Right. You're looking at April first and I think. Okay. Advisory said that you were looking at, what were they looking at? The thirty-first. Of March. So that's just before.
Yeah.
Your. For their public hearing. So that was the question.
I don't know if you have, I don't think you have to post a whole. Word of the warrant.
No. Don't we usually say it's on file?
That you're having a hearing.
Yeah.
And what the subject matter is.
Subject matter.
The two bylaws, yeah.
Now, to get that to, and would that wording go to?
It goes to Rose.
Yeah, but after Rose gets it, we have to be able to publish it and send it out before our town meeting.
We have to head up before the town meeting.
And town meeting, so.
So the town meeting is the twelfth.
Right, so backing into, yeah, you're right. Yeah. On May twelfth, I believe, you are correct.
Monday, May.
So then they wanna, you probably wanna, they wanna before the advisory committee hearing.
Yes.
So it there, that's the fourteenth. Of April. I think that's what Doug said the other night.
Is that what he said?
Yeah, fourteenth.
The wording? The wording for the word?
Yeah.
There's no dollar amounts associated with it, so.
No dollar amount associated with you guys.
Brian said it the first to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We wanna get it done by the first week to print it and have it.
Yeah, and mail it out.
And mail it out.
Yeah. So the wording's not gonna probably be changed again between now and April first, because.
Well, we haven't, when you say the wording, I mean, this one here is still up in the air right now.
But it can be changed. Well, I'm thinking we only have one more meeting before. For one. We have a twenty-sixth meeting?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so the B E S S, we're pretty much done with that, right?
Yeah.
Um, except for the setbacks.
So she got that. I got that in.
Did you put it in?
That's, that's all in.
Okay.
So it's the A D U, which she's reviewing with the Attorney General.
Whatever their comments are. When did she say we'd have that back?
I told her I, I was looking at three twenty, putting the legal notice in, so she was gonna try to get it.
And I think we'd be fine.
Before that, so we should.
Has to do it, that's all. The hell, she gets thirteen thousand dollars an hour or something. Seems that way at least.
Yeah.
I told her it has to be done by three twenty, then I think we're gonna have the wording by the fourteenth for advisory for the printer or whatever. First.
And she's reviewing the B E S S too. But I think that's pretty much.
We can only do what we can do.
Well, it's not like it can't be changed at town meeting.
Right.
Right, you can amend.
And amend it at fall town meeting.
Yeah.
Worst case comes.
Does it really get done?
I don't know, I'm not a board member. I'm the board member.
Mending it?
Yeah. Okay. Um. All right, well. We're on a tight schedule. That's all I got to say. I think we're gonna.
Running out of time.
Yes, we are.
We've been doing our best.
Yeah. All right. Um. Did you have any comment on any of those?
No, no, so that's, well. I have a political comment.
Okay. I mean, I'm open to listen to it.
There's nothing to do with. It's just another one of those things with the state. Talk about home rule, but there is no home. Same thing with solar, same thing with B, same thing with the.
The A D U.
A D Us, you know?
Yeah. It's difficult.
Difficult, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and they give you an example, it's nothing to do with this, but they passed an economic development bill and the economic development bill. There's hundreds of millions of dollars for municipal building. For cultural things, for libraries and also, but we can't get any because we're not a member, we don't have the M B T A.
That's right. So.
So the bill actually says only M B T A towns are eligible.
Immunities. And I went and I did review that after you had said that the other day. It is all circled around and there has been some debate about that.
Yeah.
Look at the M B L C grant. M B L C, that's a library.
Yeah, library, good, right, library. They put, they put a hundred fifty million dollars in libraries. Except we can't get any of it because. Yes. Only can go to M B T. The towns that.
Oh, with teeth?
Yeah.
So even, even this A D U.
So it's good for.
Even this A D U.
Yeah.
No, even the A D U by law, by law, make special provisions for M B A areas that if you're.
Get money to do it.
Yes. Yes.
That's math.
It's a difficult thing, so. All right.
There we are.
No. Well taken, trust me.
I don't think I read about that on that grant.
That's all.
You just missed the turkey shooting all over here. Just like you.
All right. Good.
I have one other thing, there's a place.
I have two others, I have something too. Go ahead.
You go. You go.
CPC is next week?
CPC is next week.
Somebody available to vote about?
Do you want me to go? I think it's.
You're available, I have.
I am available, I know. Talked about it, I was available, so.
If you're available, uh, I mean.
I don't know what time.
Did you email me this?
Um. I mean, I can.
The time count, town calendar thing.
Next week is the nineteenth. John.
So, yeah, so it's Wednesday, March nineteenth at six P M in the townhouse. So like I said, I am. I'm available if you'd like me to go to represent the, uh, planning board, uh, planning board.
So at six, I can go to it.
Yeah, okay. What is that, C? CPC, the Community Preservation.
We don't have a rep unless.
You know, the money that comes out of your real estate tax bill every quarter. That we wonder what it goes to.
And it's an interesting, because.
Do you wanna go, Pat?
Well, I have a master.
Master plan on Tuesday night.
It's interesting, because it's a certain percentage, and it's based on the valuations, so as the valuations go up. Yeah, the money goes up too.
You need a CPC rep, I was only filling, cause.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind going, if you'd like me to go, I'm, well. He's already discussed some of the, uh, what they're gonna do.
All right, go. I don't think very often.
Wolverham Select Department, like.
You are. So do you think that, not, yeah.
They've taken, they've taken it off, they've taken it off the warrant.
Did you have one of those? Nope, that was it.
They're gonna do it for the.
What were we gonna do? I don't know, I read them in that afternoon.
On the warrant, there's a placeholder thirty-one for the zoning corrections edits. I'm assuming that was section four point three point two, non-conforming structures.
Yes.
Which we never got, um, a response back yet from.
Rose.
Council, I gotta imagine, are we taking that off there?
So.
I gotta let Brian know.
So you, no, you can't, because in this, her, her email, it calls out that, and in other words, that's why I'm, I'm saying.
Yeah.
Her, her.
Pertaining to the ADU?
Yeah, cause.
She references changing that bylaw?
Yeah, no, no, but it has to do with that, because four point one, four point ten point four. Is the relationship to non-conformities, and it said affinity blah 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 blah, and her comment is four point ten point four. And she's got three question marks after it. Where is this going to be inserted with another three question marks? So how do you deal with three existing non-conforming is definitely not decided. AG is studying and will likely offer guidance on interpretation of the meaning of. Seven sixty CMR, seventy-one point zero three, regarding pre-existing non-conforming structures. Which section four do, is part of that, so that part of the, our bylaw, um. It has still not been clarified, so it's going to be interesting to see how. The AG is going to handle that, that's why I said this.
But there, we're not gonna have anything on the warrant for that, specifically section four.
We cannot.
So I'm gonna take that off for Brian.
Yes.
Yeah, cause it doesn't look, she's gonna come back with it, right?
I'm gonna let him know, so we only have two warrants is what I was saying. Two, uh, warrant articles.
No, you're gonna have one more, because you.
No, one warrant, we have two articles on it.
But you're, okay, so in the warrant article for the B E S S.
Yeah.
We have a conflict of, in the solar, you're talking about caliper diameter in the, um. For the trees, and then on the, um, B E S S, you're talking about breast height diameter. Which one do you wanna make conform to the existing, cause it, you know, are you talking breast height or are you talking caliper? For the trees.
So that's clarification within that warrant article.
It's either that, or you, or you change the B E S S to caliper.
Right.
So it conforms, or it's in line with the, our existing zoning bylaws.
So is that, you're saying we're gonna make, before we give Brian the final copy?
The question I have in front of the board is what do you want to do? Do you wanna change the B E S S to?
Yes, I don't want to have to have another thing to amend a solar bylaw to conform with a new bylaw. Right?
What?
I think we just changed the BS, B E S S, when they were presenting, so it conforms with the existing solar bylaw. We changed it to calipers.
Correct, so that would, that would be an amendment, you know what I'm saying, or a, a warrant, or, you know, an amendment, a warrant article.
Yeah.
So it's easier to change the B E S S, so you're gonna need to, we'll do that, I'm sure it's gonna come back. They're not gonna care, and we're just.
So we still only have two warrant articles is what I was asking.
Now, because you've all decided, right, that we're gonna change the B E S S, okay.
So on the twenty-sixth, you're gonna do that?
Yeah.
Our next meeting? So I'll put that on there.
So you might as well make that change, Joanne.
I don't, why can't we just change it up?
You can do it at the public hearings? Okay.
Sending it, so why do we have to?
Okay, that's fine.
That right now is a part of the warrant article, why would we have to do it at the twenty-sixth?
Well, I thought if we're changing the bylaw. It's done, usually in an open meeting, we're changing it again, but if you're gonna do it in the public hearing, that's an open meeting, that's fine, you can change it there.
It's just a clarification, I think it's like a.
Yeah.
Field breaker.
So I won't put it on the agenda, we'll do it in the public hearing. So, John.
Go ahead, I'm, I'm listening, Joanne.
Make note what all that is you just said, diameter, what is it?
It's breast height in here, in the.
Yeah, breast height diameter versus what?
Um, caliper. In the, this is solar, it's calibrated, how they measure the tree.
Right. Okay.
And in this, this one here, they're talking about measuring the tree at breast height.
Okay, just remember that's when we do the public hearing.
Well, what I'll do is, um. I'll send it to you, Joanne, a page and where it should be changed.
Okay. Did you read the mail, battery energy storage? Moratorium in your folder?
Yeah, give it back to us.
Okay. Backup. The decision.
I know you emailed the same thing.
Oh, I did email it, all right, forget it, okay.
You ready, good?
But she wanted to do the minutes from last month, oh, wait.
I didn't see, I didn't hear.
I didn't put them again, because I made copies at home.
I'm not gonna keep making copies every time.
No, I left, she left mine in the folder, it left me, leave mix.
Because I'm not gonna get them posted anyway.
Okay, then we wait.
Unless Maddie, do you wanna do them now? I don't think so with the kids here. I'll just give you more next week. All right, so you know, if you empty your folders and take everything home, I don't refill them all again, just so you know, I figured if you take them. I used to make copies and keep filling, it's getting ridiculous.
I'm killing. Uh, motion to adjourn.
I get it.